And it's six thirty and we'll somebody's. Somebody's. No, it's Mr. Fode. Okay, we've got no feedback here in chambers, so we'll begin this committee of the whole on Monday, October the seventh, calling the meeting to order at six thirty P M. And the first motion is to adopt the agenda coming from councillor Mayby, seconded by councillor Fode or deputy mayor Fode, that the agenda be adopted as circulated and that council agrees to waive the procedural bylaw for the agenda and move in camera items to follow the mayor's update. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it's carried. Next item is declaring any pecuniary interest or general nature thereof. We have received one declaration from councillor Jameson in regards to conflict regarding the community improvement plans and the community grants as he is a member of the Legion. So any other declarations of pecuniary interest? I see no hands up, so we'll move forward with delegations and four point one library update. So Cindy Code is here with us tonight along with Brenda Lawley to provide counsel with an update regarding the Leeds and Thousand Islands Public Library. Welcome.
Good evening and happy Canadian Library Month. It's always actually appropriate that Ontario Public Library Week does fall into the same month of Thanksgiving. And I'm just here to to provide a few, give you a few moments to talk about a successful summer that we had at the library. And also to extend a heartfelt thank you to our stakeholders who continue to support us. So two thousand and twenty-four TD Summer Reading saw a dramatic increase in programs offered and attended. And this was a result of a collaborative effort of a truly dedicated library staff, which was spearheaded by a team member who was recently promoted to library services coordinator this year. So we had a hundred and eight children register for the program this year in a comparison to two thousand and twenty-three, we had thirty-one.
Wow.
Yeah. Fifty-nine programs were offered in this year, which resulted in a total attendance of seven hundred and fifty-eight children. And last year we had twenty-nine programs and overall attendance of two hundred and thirty-two. One thousand eight hundred and fourteen children's books were checked out between July and August. And this amounts to fifteen dollars per book, which is a little over twenty-seven thousand savings of community members by using library resources. Each year there is a suggested theme for summer reading, and this year we absolutely look to the stars. And we looked at the stars for how bright they, how bright they were in their community and how captivating they are. And the highlight absolutely were our star readers who participated in our weekly storytime events and all the branches. There are so many memorable moments. Fire prevention services provided us with six delightfully educational and entertaining visits. Councillor Jameson and Calhoun, N P P Clark, N P Barrett, a former L T I P L C E O Yolande, and also local forest of reading author Sandra Bradley, offered valuable time, voice and joy as star readers. And we also partnered with the township and were able to offer free ice cream to every child who participated. And when I think about what reading means to me, I think about how books connect. And one of my personal favorite memories, highlights of this TD Summer Reading was witnessing an O P P star who had never read to children before. Yeah, he still volunteered. And you can definitely see the spark of delight when he was sharing the story with the children for the first time. And that's what it was all about. So since a picture is worth a thousand words, there is a visual recap of our summer events on our Facebook page. I did include it, but I'm not sure if it was on the agenda. Is it? So I think everybody might have seen it. It's very cute. We're looking forward to implementing more programs while we're building community engagement. And some dates to keep in mind. October eighteenth is Canadian Library Workers' Day. So if you're around the branches, stop in and just say hello. Ontario Public Library Week, libraries are for life. October is October twentieth to twenty-sixth, and we'll have open houses in all our branches. So if you're around stopping for a coffee, hot chocolate, tea, we'll probably even have juice boxes or some treats. And also see how we've transformed our branches and continue to enhance our indoor spaces. And take a look at our community puzzle. And while I'm on the topic of artwork, it's something that we'd like to partner with Lafer. They have a barn quilt trail. And they're looking at to see if libraries, they could put one up on the library branches. And these trails are really becoming quite popular. You're not only seeing them on barns, but you're seeing them homes and businesses and municipal buildings such as libraries. We already have designs in mind. October twenty-fifth, we're partnering, this was just new today, partnering with Rita Water Land Trust again for Rock Dunder hike, and that's at ten A M. October twenty-ninth, library staff will be at the Trunk and Treat at the Pineview, sorry, Pine Grove Community Church in Sealy's Bay, sixth date. October thirty-first, we're thrilled to be joining the Lansdowne Agricultural Society for Spooktacular, which is five P M to eight P M. November ninth, we're going to be having a storytime with a member of a military community. And that's at Lansdowne, ten thirty. November eighteenth, library staff will be present at the seniors expo held at Sealy's Bay Hall between nine A M and three P M. And we're also going to be teaming up with township staff during the Lansdowne Lynnhurst parades and tree lighting ceremonies. So in closing, during this month of being thankful, fifty years ago, council decided that township should have its own public library service. And while we are currently reviewing our strategic plan for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine period, this is a time frame which will have us celebrate fifty years at One Jesse. And who knows what the future will bring? So with much appreciation on behalf of the library board, members and our staff, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, councillor.
Excuse me, thank you and through you, your worship. The electronic side of the book borrowing and so on, is that, is that being taken up quite regularly or is that still something that is a struggle in our township?
We'd like to offer more services. We work through a concourse, contortion, contortion, sorry. And we can only offer a certain amount each day, so we'd like to sort of bump that up. So people aren't always waiting. Because if you go and try to get something, say, in the middle of the day, it's not available. Yeah.
Do you have the sense that it's, the uptake is increasing?
Yes, it definitely is.
It is.
Yeah, definitely is.
Excellent.
And books are still popular. Books will always be popular in libraries. You know, I'm, I'm a traditionalist. I love the fill of books and I think a lot of us who are book readers love that.
Me too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I would just like to thank you on behalf of the township and council, of course, to say, wow, what a great summer. To see those numbers increase the way they are and so many children involved in that program. I'm sorry I wasn't able to read myself. This, I did a lot of reading, but I did it in beside a hospital bed, unfortunately. So, but I think it speaks to what community, what an integral part of any library is to the community, especially during the summer months when people are looking for things to do with children and trying to find ways to engage them and, and reading is the best way that you can engage anybody's mind. I know that, to the point that councillor Girl made in regards to digital online. I know more and more seniors are also listening to their books through their phone. They're downloading books and, and listening and, and just keeping people's minds active and engaged and thinking about all sorts of different types and genres of, of reading, if you will. So even if their eyesight is failing them, they are able to escape in a book, which is really important. So thank you for the service that you provide, all the staff and all the volunteers that have given their time to be part of this. It's really important. It's important to all parts of this township.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to staff reports, public conduct and corporate trespass to property procedures. So that motion comes forward from councillor Kelman, seconded by councillor Lackey, that the Committee of the Whole recommends council approve the bylaw and public conduct policy attached to administration report twenty twenty-four dash zero two five as exhibit A, policy admin twenty twenty-four dash zero one. That the Committee of the Whole recommend that council approve the bylaw and the corporate trespass to property procedures attached to administration report number, excuse me, administration report twenty twenty-four dash zero two five as exhibit B, policy admin twenty twenty-four dash zero two. So the motion is on the floor, discussion on the motion. Go ahead councillor Lackey and then councillor Mayby.
Thank you, worship and through you. I understand the need for this policy to keep our staff comfortable and in a safe place to work and. But I, I do feel this seems to be, it's a lot of reading and it seems to be a little heavy handed. And I'm not sure if that's required, so I would look to staff to explain to me the background and, and why we need such a an in-depth document. And, and one of the other comments that I have about it is that in several areas of the document, it pertains to the council staff and, and the public. And I'm, as a councillor, that's what I signed up for. That's what I do. So I was not consulted, you know, basically whether I wanted this or, or to have council involved or participation in it. But I'll, I would like staff to elaborate more before I continue.
Madam C A O. Thank you through you. This policy is being brought forward based on a few situations that have happened recently. In looking into this, we have consulted with legal because there were situations where we needed to speak to our lawyers based on the behavior that was experienced by staff. In addition to that, the ombudsman's office has also recommended that these policies be put in place and provided examples of these policies. I would say that the nature of these particular policies that are in front of council would only apply to maybe one percent of the interactions that we have, but in the absence of a policy, we don't have a clear framework to be dealing with those situations. And the reason that it applies to council as well is because there may be situations where a member of the council is, or is being subjected to similar behavior. Without defining the behavior as is defined within the policy, it's difficult to apply the policy. So again, the ombudsman's office, as well as our legal council said that without a clear defined policy and scope and process in dealing with these situations, we don't have the mechanism we need to be able to deal with it in a clear and transparent and consistent manner. I can tell you that we did have a conversation with staff based on some interactions that had happened recently and let them know that we were bringing this type of policy forward to make sure that our staff feel that they're being supported in such situations. It's unfortunate that we need a policy of this nature. But as I said, it would only apply to approximately one percent of interactions. This is for the extreme scenarios, not for the day-to-day scenario where we're dealing with somebody who is upset at the counter or has a regular concern. This is for an extreme situation, but and, and as I said, it's unfortunate, a number of other municipalities have brought forward very similar policies because we also did a policy review of other municipalities in bringing this forward. So that, that's the reason for it, so that we have the mechanism we need to be able to deal with situations consistently. Follow up?
Thank you, worship. No, I understand completely and, you know, I, I support this in principle for sure. It just, there's, there's a lot in there that people may read and say, like, basically, who do you think you are? Like, there's, there's a lot of things in there that would rub people the wrong way. We are here to serve the public. And the public has a right to tell us how they feel. So as I say, I'm supported in principle, but I just wish it was either simplified, condensed, worded a little differently. It seems pretty strong when, you know, I, I can really see that, you know, you think one percent are mad now, some of them might read this and you might get two or three percent coming through the door after reading it is what I'm saying. I'm okay with it, but others may not.
Councillor Mayby, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. My, my question was basically the same, a little bit of background which you have given, so thank you very much. And that's it for me.
Any other comments? Go ahead councillor.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I think it's high time for a policy like this. When we were at A M O in August, this was a theme. It was actually brought to the question and answer period with the entire provincial cabinet basically there. Because there was, it was a specific, very serious case happening in a larger municipality in Pickering. But there are not the same protections for municipal staff and councillors that there are for higher tiers of government. And at this point, I think we have to protect our staff ourselves because there's not a higher level of government doing it. And I also think that we have a lot of competition for staff. And we are very fortunate to have the staff that we have, but if we don't protect them, we may lose them to the private sector that may be able to offer them more money and more protection because they're not having to deal with irate members of the public. So I think it is, I think it has to be very specifically worded and long because otherwise someone's going to find a loophole. And I think it is unfortunate that we need to have it, but in this digital age where it is so easy to post something nasty online or send an email, it's a lot harder to treat someone badly in person or even over the telephone, but we don't live in that age. And I think we've all seen the shift that's happened in our society. And this is a reflection of that, but I really believe we need it to protect our staff. So I am very much in favor of it.
Any other hands up? Oh, go ahead councillor Girl and then I'll go back to councillor Lackey. Okay, go ahead councillor Lackey.
No, sorry, just on the same vein as councillor Kelman, I was recently at Rita Lakes and you don't get in the building unless you're buzzed in. You state your, you go through the first set of the foyer and state your business and then you get buzzed in the door, so.
I think that's more of a, a, a situ, a situation of the access to the building and they don't, they're jammed in there at like sardines, unfortunately. So I don't think that there's a clear safety path. I, just speaking, being there not too long ago and some of the changes that the public might have seen here that we know that we've done here to divide things off and even putting up the, the plexiglass at the front counter. You know, I remember when we were first elected, my office was out in the, out there by myself and I, I was put back there. And I had, that wasn't a choice, that was a directive because, not because I don't want to speak to people and happy to speak to people, but it was a safety concern, even the plexiglass. And, and I remember thinking at the time, this is, this is Lansdowne, like what's, what's going to happen here? But unfortunately, not everybody behaves the way that they, that's considered civil. So, sorry, go ahead councillor.
Thank you and through your, you, your worship. I read this over very carefully and I agree with councillor Lackey. And I do thank staff for the explanation. But getting into some nuts and bolts, could we just quickly go over the process of how we would arrive at X?
And. Or the policy would apply?
How?
How it, how it gets to that point?
And then how an appeal is done and just quickly. And I would like to make one amendment and I'm not sure where to make it. But I would like all of council notified immediately that someone or some entity was involved here. And the reason I say that is I know I've gotten emails that are addressed to me and I know that each and every one of us also got that email. And they're attempting to pull something out of rather than a council. It's a shotgun blast.
So.
So it would be important if some entity or person.
Incident?
Incident has occurred because you may or may not get an email and it would leave us unknowing and we might step in it. So I would like somewhere in there an amendment that immediately all council members and however many staff need to know are notified.
So I think that because we accept this in principle, but that it could come back to council with that amendment, that council be notified if this is enacted? Would that be, or do you want it amended here?
Just as long as it's in there.
Well, because the thing is we won't pass it next week if it's not there. It just means that it will be worded correctly if they, if we give them the time to go back to, you know what I mean? Is there anything else in the policy that anybody would like?
If we're going to amend, we need to vote on that?
I think.
At this point, maybe not.
I don't think. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Your worship, just providing staff with that information, it does come back to council next week. So then that would be the time. So I don't believe we have to amend it. We can just move forward as is.
So the motion would probably come forward next week as amended? Like this motion would come forward as amended policy, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Are there, is there anything else that's missing in the policy or any other clarity? Do you want it read, read out? Councillor Girl? No? Okay.
Excuse me, and lastly, just a very brief overview of how we would arrive at a final kind of judgment.
To enact this?
Yes, just for the protection of all. And that it makes sense. I mean, it's got a chain of authority here. I understand, you know, staff has to provide some documentation and then what happens?
Go ahead, Madam C A O.
Briefly.
Thank you through you. So the policy itself defines and provides examples of behavior. And those are simply examples, each situation would be judged on its own merits. So for example, there may be an episode at the front counter where somebody is angry or upset. We deal with that a lot and that may be perfectly fine where we just deal with the individual and say whatever. However, if it becomes a situation where there's threats, where there's consistent negative language, and I'm not talking just, I'm, I'm talking very negative language, but, but also particularly threats against staff or somebody may incur, encounter someone outside of the office where there are threats or where there is some personal threats. Those types of situations, they need to be documented. The policy does indicate that if there is an immediate threat, that nine one one is to be called. But in some of these situations, the individual will either go and get a manager supervisor director. The situation would be documented. If the, if the communication needs to be stopped and the person asked to leave the premises, that would happen. Our first step is always trying to resolve the situation. If we're not able to resolve the situation, then it's documented. It may be that there's more than one incident that leads up to a finding of vexatious or, or bad behavior. But that is something where there, as you mentioned, chain of command. So the staff person, and in many situations, because it's happening at the front counter, there is more than one witness to a situation or multiple staff become involved by the nature of the confrontation that's happening. That's always escalated up, so a director would become involved. Ultimately, the C A O would become involved. If it's found that the situation and the interaction is such that it's classified as vexatious behavior, then it would be, in most situations, a, a letter would be crafted and sent to the individual saying that by the nature of this interaction, you are, so the, the policy provides some options. You are only to communicate with staff by email. You are only to communicate with staff by voice message. You are only to communicate with this particular staff person. So the first step is going to be trying to direct how that communication happens and where it happens. If there's need for future communication, depending on what the situation is. So each situation really does need to be looked at based on what it actually is. In some situations, it may be that there shall be no more communication with staff where this behavior has to cease. So there, there's some variability depending on what the situation is.
That would be, everything described there really takes place in this building. I guess what I was thinking is incidents outside of this building.
So we have had those.
I'm sure. And therefore protecting staff.
Yeah.
Critical. But then, so staff would come back and discuss with managers and yeah. And then any number of things could happen, I suppose. Who's the adjudicator? How does it get adjudicated?
The C A O. And then if there's an appeal to a scenario, it can, it goes up to our legal council. And the ombudsman.
And the ombudsman.
Or the integrity commissioner.
Integrity commissioner, if it's council that's involved.
Ombudsman is more bureaucracy.
I got it. Outside of.
Correct.
Understood.
But the, the goal is not to have to use this policy. We were talking about this previous to the meeting and really in recent memory, there's two instances in the last six years that this really would have applied to. That, that they remember.
If you don't mind me saying, I'm thinking bylaw enforcement has got to be a miserable position in some respects. And this would be to me a situation where that might arise.
Well, we were very fortunate to have a bylaw officer who had a good sense of humor and, and did her job very well. But we're in the process of finding a new one right now. But again, the whole purpose of this policy is to not have to use it, but it's there to protect not only council and staff, but the, the public too is, we don't, we don't want anybody. We know we're not going to make everybody happy, but we have to find a way to negotiate that path. But that requires civility on both sides of that equation, not just us, so.
Thank you. I won't belabor the point further. Thank you very much.
Just, just to pick up on your point about the public. There was a pretty ugly incident up at the landfill up my way that was reported to me by several neighbors. And they were very upset by the way the attendant was being treated and slurs and everything else. So I know that, you know, the vast majority of us are going to, to be civilized in, in our, in our interactions. But this was also something that bothered other residents. So the question I was asked was, well, what can you guys do to slow that down? And this could be one of the vehicles to do that. So there it is.
Deputy Mayor Fode.
Thank you, your worship. I'm glad to see this come forward for the same reasons that's been stated by my colleagues. This is a bigger picture of society as a whole now. We see it every day played out. The grander scale that we can relate to is the G T A. It happens every day up there with religions and law enforcement. And just last night, it indicated on the news that graffiti put on a Toronto police station overnight, last night or the night before was the first of its kind. But as I stated, it's, it's a mentality, if you will, today's society that they can go unchecked, unpenalized and do as they please. We got to rein this in before we wished we had of. This policy stops that. That'll put us in the forefront of doing just that.
Any other hands? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the policy of the motion? All those opposed and it is carried. Thank you. Next item is request for small halls music event to be deemed municipally significant. So that comes forward from councillor Lackey, seconded by councillor Kelman, that the Committee of the Whole deems small halls music event scheduled for October eleventh as municipally significant for the purposes of the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario's Special
of the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario's special occasion permit process. And that the committee, the whole waived the required notice period for the event. Discussion on this motion? Go ahead, Counselor Kelman.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I just wanted to thank the clerk on behalf of Sabara for squeaking this in because there, it, there was a time crunch. So thank you.
Any other comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor. All those post. It's carried. Next item, appointment of deputy mayor. And the motion comes forward from Angela Kelman, seconded by Counselor Lackey. Uh, the committee, the whole recommends council hereby appoint counselor blank as deputy mayor as of November first, twenty twenty four until October thirty first, twenty twenty five. So the one year term is up for deputy mayor Fodi and so we look to the floor. Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. I uh, wish to put uh, Deputy Mayor Fodi back on the list to uh, continue doing the great job that he's been able to do uh, in your absence and other things. So uh, I put him back on.
Any other motions? Go ahead, Counselor Lackey.
Thank you, your worship and through you. Um, while I have no issues with the uh, going with the status quo. Um, I would honestly like to see our volunteer of the year uh, nominated for deputy mayor. Mister Counselor Maybe.
Oh, Counselor Maybe. Okay. Any other nominations? Nominations? Nominations. Called three times. So I've got two. Mr. Fodi, will you let your name stand? Sure.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? Um, up until now, I'd ask um, Counselor Lackey to correct me. This has always been a two-year term.
Uh, I believe that.
I see it's changed now.
It's, so it's because of the last, sorry, I'll let the clerk deal with that.
That's okay. Uh, so the procedure of bylaw does call it a one-year term. Um, I'm not sure if that's been waived in the past. Um, but the council procedure bylaw does call it a one-year term.
I think it had to do with the previous, um, the previous person who is deputy mayor had passed.
Right. I realized that, which I was fortunate enough to fulfill that position, which I've held for about fourteen months.
Right.
Um, but I mean, a two-year term is not that long a term. And that's what it was when we came in at eighteen. It was two years.
So the procedure bylaw says a year. So we might have been operating the procedure bylaw at that time.
No, I just didn't realize whether that was misprint or what had changed, but it was just a question. Thanks.
So my question is, Mr. Fodi, will you let your name stand? Okay. Mister Maybe, will you let your name stand? Mister Lackey, you had your name up, hand up? Sorry, I missed that.
It's okay.
You're good?
Well, no, I believe uh, Deputy Mayor was correct. It was when we used to rotate it. That was one year kind of out of time, but I was almost certain that we changed that to two years. It's gotta be in one of our.
I don't recall, but.
I'm pretty sure.
So I, so we've got some, maybe we should table this till the, till um, the council meeting.
I'm, I'm a hundred percent. It was two years.
Well, and it's, it's funny you say that because when the clerk had asked me about it, I thought it was two years as well, but she told me that it was in the procedure bylaw. So so maybe there's something somewhere in our uh, minutes somewhere that did not change the bylaw for whatever reason. So anyways, we're, maybe I could have somebody, go ahead, Counselor Kelman.
Perhaps we should have a motion to table this until the council meeting.
We can't table, that tabling is only for a meeting. Sorry, it has to be deferred to the council meeting.
To defer then.
Differ.
I'll make that motion.
So Kelman, I need a seconder to defer. Okay, Jameson. To defer. All those in favor of the deferral? All those opposed? It's carried. Okay. So, Madam Clerk? There. Not a problem. Um, so the next item is twenty twenty four community improvement plan fall intake. Mister Jameson, can I ask you to leave the room? So the motion that is on the, will be on the floor is moved by Counselor Kelman, seconded by Counselor Lackey, that the committee whole recommends that council approve the twenty twenty four community improvement plan fall intake distribution in the amount of twenty one thousand, one hundred and fifty three dollars and twenty one cents. As attached to exhibit A to planning and development twenty twenty four dash zero eight six, that the committee, the whole recommends that council direct staff to prepare a funding agreement for each of the four approved twenty twenty four fall intake C I P applications to be executed by the mayor and clerk. Motion is on the floor. Discussion? Go ahead, uh, Deputy Mayor Fodi and then Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, your worship and through you. Can we get a little clarification as to which village we're talking about in number uh, two, the one oh one Main Street? Is that Lindhurst? Is Silly's Bay?
Through you, your worship. That's uh, Silly's Bay.
Okay. And one hundred Ormond Street.
That Lindhurst.
Pardon me?
Lindhurst. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're good, but we're not that good as far as roll numbers.
Well, I know there can be duplicated names in, in more than one location. So I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, Counselor Maybe, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. Uh, my note said four thirteen Lindhurst Road. Were they on the spring intake also?
Through your worship, yes, they were, um, there was a, a C I P grant, um, issued for repointing work through the spring intake and this current application is for roof replacement.
So it can be separate because I thought, somehow I thought that if they were, had applied, you had two years before they could reapply.
No, that is not part of policy.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Sure. Any other comments in regards to the applications presented this evening? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. All those opposed and it is carried. Okay, um, and uh, we'll move on to the community grants fall intake. No, no, he's on, off on this one. There's two conflicts. So Deputy Mayor Fodi moves, uh, seconded by Mister Jameson, which he cannot because he's not in the room. So Counselor Kelman. Uh, that the committee, the whole recommends that council, the twenty twenty four community grants fall intake distribution in the amount of twelve thousand, seventy two dollars and fifty cents as attached to corporate services twenty twenty four dash zero two five. So motion's on the floor and we have twelve thousand, seventy two dollars and fifty cents on distribution. Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. My only question was, uh, was there a reason that Wheels of Care were disqualified in this intake?
Go ahead.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Uh, yes, their, their request in this intake um, essentially was to, it, it wasn't ineligible expense under the grant program. Um, and we did have a conversation with them about that. Um, but that, that's why. Uh, Mayor Fodi was at those discussions, but it's basically an ineligible expense they were requesting.
Yeah. Any further call, call, oh, sorry. Deputy Mayor Fodi, did you have your hand up? No. Okay. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor. All those opposed and it is carried. Okay, we can ask Counselor Jameson, would you like to reenter the room? Okay, so we're on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Counselor Jameson.
Just wondered if there was any progress on the Lindhurst um, Bernis Falls Bridge. Um, your worship.
Yes. I am happy to report as of the last meeting that I attended and brought that up, it is out for design now to have uh, egress um, put in essentially a flashing light to stop the traffic so people can walk across the bridge on either side.
Do you know when, your worship, this might happen?
Uh, they did not give me a timeframe. Um, the fact that it's out for design, I would hope that it would be in the twenty twenty five year installation. Uh, the other thing that I am trying to push uh, at the same time is obviously attention to the crumbling bridge, which continues to be very disheartening every time I go near it. And I notice the amount of degradation to the pointing. Um, and also the safety concern that goes with that. If any rocks were to fall out of the wall um, on the outside, but it's more so the inside of the bridge as you're driving over it. It's starting to degrade quite a bit internally on the bridge at the top. Um, but however, there's been some rocks that have literally come out of the bridge on the other side. So um, they're not going to be able to uh, continue that uh, any, very much longer. And the last discussion I had with staff at the county was that if nothing else, they'll be doing it in stages, the repointing. Because it needs to be done. It can't be left much longer.
When you say much longer, we're really pushed into twenty twenty five now, aren't we?
It, it, it will not be done before the end of this year because we're October the seventh now. And the design work has gone out. So there's no way that they'll be able to put stuff in the ground. I don't, don't think before December.
Okay.
The, the speed at which they work. You're welcome. Any other unfinished business? Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. Again, my, my favorite two, the four oh one light and uh, the other one is C N.
So I did get an update in regards to C N that has gone, uh, it is with the lawyers now. So they are um, going back and forth, the county against C N, uh, trying to, to find a settlement. Otherwise it will go further. Um, but just as an aside in regards to C N for those who may or may not seen it, have seen it in your emails, um, there's a major challenge coming with C N in that uh, they want to download costs basically to private road owners. So any of us who have any um, rail lines through any of our wards, it's a problem because we have a number of individuals who have access over tracks, specifically farmers. And if they start to put, download those costs, um, we're already paying our costs here in the township for track maintenance. Every month we get a bill, we pay it. Um, but this could be an extreme circumstance where could cost anywhere from tens of thousands to hundreds of thousands to repair some of these crossings. So, um, we shall see how that goes.
To that um, particular uh, cause, a neighbor behind me has shared the documents which he has received on this, which is almost about a year ago now. And uh, so I knew something was going to be happening, but it, it's, it's a very hefty, hefty bill for somebody who has landlocked um, access. So, and they've been playing tag with the crossing for about six years in, out, in, out. So see how it goes.
So it, I would imagine you'll see it on the Roma agenda uh, as a, one of the breakout sessions or maybe even someone speaking to the main um, stage. Uh, so watch for that. If uh, we, we will be talking soon about who's going to what next year. Because we need to put down who might be interested in attending. So the clerk and I have already talked about that. Um, mainly because uh, we know that there's going to be some important stuff coming down the pipe uh, for both Roma and A M O. Um, and some of the things that need to happen. And we've got elections coming up here, both at the provincial and federal level that there needs to be a push. So you'll see more and more lobbying on behalf of municipalities, especially rural municipalities. Any other unfinished business? I would like to say, because nobody asked, County Road thirteen is underway, which is a huge, huge thing. Um, and I can't thank Techbury Construction enough for making sure that this project got done prior to the end of the year. Um, I went there a week and a half ago. Uh, they were marking the culverts and uh, I believe I went by there three or four days ago and, and they were starting to peel up the old ash vault, what was left of it. So um, I know that every resident along that road or anybody travels that road is very, very happy. Um, and I know they'll be happy to see it completed. So Counselor Maybe?
Yes, I also traveled down that road on Saturday and seen the progress that they've already made with new culverts in for roadways and some across the road. So uh, it's great to see it happening.
Yes. I think that's it for today anyway. Um, I am heading to county this week. Might have more to report next week. So, any other business? Mister Lackey?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'd just like to pass along um, some notes from the O P P uh, detachment board. Um, at our closed session on uh, September twenty fourth, uh, we conducted interviews for the two uh, public appointees. Um, and I got to tell you, we had eight uh, people apply. We shortlisted to five. And I'm going to tell you, it was, it was hard. It was tough. And I'm proud to say that both appointees are from our township. Um, amazing. I'd like to mention Catherine Graham and Todd Robertson. Uh, you may remember Todd as um, as applying for the council position. Um, and Catherine, of course, we probably all recognize her, but there'll be a press release if it hasn't already been sent uh, for, I'll forward the emails um, that were sent to me with the announcements. Just wanted to get everybody on board. We're trying to do a, a bit of an advertising to actually say the board is up and going. We have quorum. Uh, we're just waiting on the two provincial uh, appointees, uh, but we don't have to wait because again, we have quorum. Uh, business is moving forward. So uh, we want to get the message out there to the residents that there is a, a board available to them. Uh, we're, we're all ears. So if uh, if anyone has any recommendations or uh, ideas or things they'd like to see happen, relationships happen.
Good.
Um, get the word out, but uh, very happy to say that our two residents were brought on board. So.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that information. Any other, other business? Any notices of motion? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Fodi.
Thank you, your worship and through you. In a recent coughing spell, um, you had brought up mention of the C N uh, situation with the proposed expense in crossing. Uh, C A O, uh, Stephen Donakie and myself both attended a Zoom meeting on October the fourth with C N. Uh, there was approximately eight or nine people on that uh, meeting. And uh, it involved from our jurisdiction through to Edwardsburg Cardinal on that particular Zoom meeting. And that's when a lot of this information came to light. That being said, um, with Steve, our C A O, Steve Donakie's legal penmanship, uh, I'll be bringing the notes of motion forward to council meeting next week as a resolution and a follow-up to one provided by Edwardsburg Cardinal and passed there on August the twenty sixth, just in support of theirs.
Okay. Thank you. Um, go ahead, Counselor Graff.
Excuse me, I missed uh, on the other business. Um, would you mind if I?
We can go back. That's not a problem.
Okay. Um, I noticed in the newspaper, uh, I believe it was a tax sale in Escot. And when I looked up the roll number, um, it is near what is known as the lighthouse on um, the Parkway. And it's a, it, it's two parcels that are pretty much useless. And I'm wondering, what do we do with those wedges? They were listed at twenty eight thousand dollars and the minimum bid was ten thousand, something. You couldn't put a doghouse on those two lots or whatever they are. And what does the township do with those? Do they just write them off if they don't sell to somebody?
Great question. Go ahead, Mister Treasurer.
Um, yeah, so the tax sale, I believe is scheduled to end of October. If we do not get a bid for the cancellation price as a minimum, um, at that time, the township can choose whether we want to vest the property or not vest it. So even if the tax sale is not successful, we don't have to take it. Um, that's a decision that council would have to make afterwards. Um, if we do choose to vest it, for all intensive purposes, we're taking the property and writing off the taxes out at that time. If we choose not to vest it and the tax sale is not successful, it stays with the current owner.
Who's not paying the taxes?
That hydro? There's a hydro line runs through it, so.
It's not hydro.
It's not hydro. Okay, it just struck me.
It's not hydro. Okay. It just struck me as very, very odd, but thank you for that. Second small item, just with this last CRCA meeting, uh, there was, um, budget came out, um, tentative budget. And we're looking at a, uh, four, four and a half percent increase to 186.5, uh, which consists of, um, category one, 177, 800 plus the add-ons for another, uh, 8,600. Uh, tentative, but you can also, out of that budget, you can count on 5% increases from the CRCA for the foreseeable future is what I saw. And, um, uh, primarily it is the, uh, category one that is expanding a little bit. And those are the ones that all municipalities participate in under the law. Um, nothing stood out as being untoward or anything like that. There wasn't one item that sort of overtook, uh, the issue. Um, it just seemed, uh, fairly straightforward on their part, frankly. My third, uh, another business gets back to our municipal drains. And, uh, it, it's an awkward thing. I did a lot of research on the municipal drains and where it, how we arrived at what we arrived at a couple of weeks ago or last month. And two things jumped out at me. And one was, it was March of 2018 that a council decided and asked for, um, direction for maintenance of drains. Uh, at that, in that month, they decided that one company could not do it all because there were seven drains. So they split it between two RFPs, one Robinson and the other one McIntosh Perry. If you do the math, that's six and a half years ago. So my question is, how can a report from an engineer that's so expensive? Um, and, and the reports that we got, you'll notice to the penny, they were divided in half on two separate drains. It raises in my mind a lot of, of questions about how you can get to the, to the penny, how you can get two drains in an engineering report that, that would be that exacting. I'm not arguing with the findings. I'm asking in an RFP put out probably in the spring of 2018. And now we wait six and a half years for a report. In an RFP, is there not some kind of a timeframe? Because we are asking our citizens to pay what is basically hidden tax. And welcome to TLTI, who probably has, we probably have more municipal drains than just about any municipality because of the land that we occupy, the front neck arch with all its beaver dams and undulations and topography. So, uh, it, it hasn't sat well with me that we're asking $86,000 each of, um, two municipal trains to be split between a certain number of folks. I know before I was on council, it was the, um, Smith-Bolger that probably triggered this, that probably triggered the entire process that started December 4th, 2017. And I carefully followed it through every motion, every resolution. And by March, in other words, spring of the following year, council doing its due diligence, no doubt. But I don't think they had in their mind that it was going to cost $170,000 to get just the first two reports. We haven't even received the other reports, haven't heard a hide nor hair of them. So how does an RFP end up being six and a half years to fulfill? Is there not some obligation on there and, and what happened? Those are very awkward questions because where I'm going with that is going to make people very unhappy. That does the municipality bear some responsibility and should we take legal action against the engineering firm for being a tad late? Maybe they're not. Maybe under the law, that's perfectly legitimate.
So I don't want to cut you off, but at the same time, there's no motion on the floor in regards to this and your points are all valid. So in order for us to action something like that, there has to be motion on the table. So, um, Mr. Holiday, would you like to talk about when those reports are coming back so that we can have further discussion about this? Actionable discussion?
Yes, thank you through your worship. Um, so the reports that were presented last month, we will be bringing those back next month. Um, there are another five reports still to come with four more of those coming from, uh, Robinson Consultants and the remainder coming from McIntosh Perry. So the, the pricing that you've seen with these two reports, both of them are from one consultant. Both of them are, are from Robinson and that's the price that they submitted for, for both of the drains to do, to do the work. Um, I, I can't speak to the timeline, what the, what the, the challenge was between 2018 and, and when I arrived here. Um, I know that, uh, we've got them back in line and, and getting the reports through to, to get finalized. Um, and I also know that it, it wasn't an RFP that they were engaged under. I believe we got quotations from, from firms, um, which means we don't really have any, any of the, the typical RFP legal language that you would see. It's, it was prices provided by a consultant at that time to, to engage them.
Yeah, that would make sense with what I read in that council at the time. It appears to me under resolution. They said, we will divide up the seven, I believe, into two categories or two, um, engineering firms. And it didn't sound like it was going out to tender. Uh, I guess understandably, they're expert in their field, but I guess the discussion, I can bring that up further when it comes back in front of us, I guess, uh, inappropriate at this time.
Yeah. Just more, just more so that if there is anything that comes out of the discussion that we can action it under a motion. Okay? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just to add to that, if you, some of those questions you asked are very good questions. It would be helpful if we could have those in writing so that we can make sure they're addressed in the report when they come forward to the best of our knowledge.
Okay, and that way they're not missed. Um, just to add a little pin a bow on that, I'm going to put you on the spot, uh, Mr. Holiday. Would it be typical that we just go out for quote for this or should this have been a tender? If you were doing it in the future, would it be a tender? I'm just asking.
Or something like this, given the cost, it should have been an RFP. Uh, typically a tender is, is something that you, you know what you're looking to acquire. This is, we're looking for professional services to provide us that recommendation. We don't know the outcome already. So that's where you, you engage through RFP and you allow their expertise to tell you, you know, what, what their methodology will be, you know, what, what they expect the end result to be in the timelines.
And they were engaged prior to you coming to us, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Wanted to be clear about timelines. Okay, so any other, I'm back to other business if there's any other, other business? No other business, no notices of motion other than Deputy Mayor Foddy's? Okay, and which case I'll go with the mayor's update. I'll try to be as brief as possible. Um, we, a couple of things have happened in the last month. Um, I was asked to be interviewed in regards to our, uh, open house regarding, uh, the urbanization of Lansdowne. Um, and it, that went very well, um, very well received. And I think our meeting, uh, at first was a bit, a bit, uh, tenacious, but, uh, we got, uh, the information out. Um, and we had a number of people show up to look to what we're hoping to do here and I hope, hoping to accomplish here in the village, which I'm very excited to see the plans starting to form so that as time wears on and we resource that, um, revitalization of the village, that it's done consistently. It's done well and it'll look unified, uniform throughout the village as all villages should be in the future. Um, but, uh, there's going to be some challenges and changes over the, over the process. Uh, I am, uh, you know, I'll say publicly, I'm very disappointed in the county. Uh, the county was asked to be part of this consultation process and refused, um, which makes no sense to me. Uh, wouldn't imagine it would make any sense to either one of any of the counselors because we have two county roads that intersect within this village. So it really doesn't make any sense. However, uh, we are continuing to endeavor to engage them for a number of reasons because there are things that need to be identified and dealt with as part of this overall project. So, um, never fear, we won't give up. So, um, but nonetheless, it will be nice to have uniform sidewalks, stormwater management, roads, things, things are starting to get quite rough here in the village and we want to have a plan for going forward. So I thank the staff that put that together and who attended that evening. Uh, very excited about the library and all the events that you were talking about Cindy. So thank you very much. We'll make sure that those go up on, we'll share them on our social media channels as well. Um, also I was invited to, um, be part of the Unified Rito Canal Mayors that are, uh, very concerned about La Salle Bridge, uh, being a fixed, uh, bridge and not able to become, um, movable very easily. I think it's half a million dollars to move it. They're giving a nine hour window for boats to get through. Makes no sense. Um, so myself, Mayor Jones from Westport, Mayor Huguenboom from Rito Lakes and, uh, Mayor Panko from Smith Falls had a press conference in Smith Falls at the side of the canal. Um, imploring both the, uh, infrastructure, the public infrastructure, uh, ministry as well as Minister of Transport to be engaged because as of right now, we have wrote letters, but with no response. Um, because there are many communities who are desperately looking to under, better understand what their plan is because right now, um, they're saying three years before a new bridge is in place that we'll be able to lift. And that is too long for some of the businesses that exist along this canal. Um, and the communities that depend on that trade, uh, the Looper Boats, um, the Loop, the great Loop Association said there's 300 boats just from their Loop Association that go through. That's not including just people coming up from the Thousand Islands, going up through Kingston and up through the canal. Um, obviously places like Ottawa would not have the, see the same impact as our smaller villages. However, um, it is, it is, uh, significant to, uh, many of these, uh, villages that are along the canal. And it is a navigable waterway and they blocked it off. So, and we had a call with the federal minister or the bureaucrats from that ministry, um, which was them just basically educating us as to where, how it was going to be. They weren't really there to take feedback, unfortunately, but we would like to be part of solution. Um, not, uh, have to engage down a legal channel, but it is still there as an option. Um, I also would like to make the community aware that there is a movie that will be made here in the township. Um, over the next couple of weeks. So if you see movie crews down by the Thousand Islands Bridge down near Ivy Lee Campground and in the Ganonakway area, please be respectful and just be aware that they are there. Um, there is a movie being made and if it looks like somebody might be dumping a dead body in the river, don't worry, it's just a movie. So, um, so the hope is that, uh, you know, that goes smoothly and they'll come back many times. Um, also just want to say thank you to both the Brockville and the Ganonakway Chambers of Commerce. Both had galas this month and, uh, we had a great time in Ganonakway, uh, a week ago. Um, lots of great, uh, winners, employers for the area that, uh, make up our communities. So I thank them. Uh, the Brockville Chamber of Commerce, we had two nominee nominees from the township. Um, at the Brockville Chamber, uh, which was great. Rockport Boat Line, uh, was one nominee and Keel Marine Construction. And Keel Marine Construction took home, uh, Business of the Year. So, um, all congratulations out to all the businesses who were nominated at both Ganonakway and Brockville. And thank you to all of, and, oh, sorry, and, and of course, the most important award went to our counselor, uh, Counsel Maybe. Thank you for the reminder. Um, Counsel Maybe was awarded Volunteer of the Year Award at the Ganonakway, uh, Chamber event. So very pleased to see that award go to you, Mr. Maybe, and all the things that you do between the Santa Claus Parade, your town crier and all the other laundry list of things that you do on a regular basis. Much appreciated. And lastly, just like to congratulate everybody at the Turkey Fair for a wonderful event as always. My goodness. Um, this year as always, it, it astounds me the sheer number of people that show up for the Turkey Fair. And the best part being is that most people are online when they're asking what, where is it being held? You know, where are the fairgrounds? They don't exist. It's the entire village. And so it's great to see this entire village get together for that. So congratulations to all the organizers. I do know that they put a call out right afterwards for more volunteers because they are desperate for more volunteers. So if you have children who need volunteer hours and if you're an adult that would like to go and see, maybe you want to give some of your time the day before or a few days before when they're setting up, um, in order to help out, I know that would be greatly appreciated. And we had our OLG thank you event for all the, uh, individuals that were grant winners as well out at Furness Falls Farm. Um, and Kathleen Divine and Karen Smiley were down from OLG to help us, um, recognize all of our community organizations that do so much. I think that's it. Unless I missed anything. And the seniors walk is coming up, I believe, at Charleston Lake 21st. We'll have to look up that date, but I know that it's, um, it is also coming up. And I believe that there's only so many spots. So if you are interested, please reach out to, um, the township and we'll put you in contact with the people organizing. Okay, nothing else? We'll have the motion to go in camera and we'll take a 10 minute break and comfort break. So before we go into in camera, moved by Counsel Jameson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Foddy, that council resolve itself into Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting to consider the following items. In camera session minutes, September 9th, 2024, labor relations or employee negotiations and personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Discussion on the motion? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those, okay, opposed, carried. Okay, we are adjourned for 10 minutes.